But to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't we get the student reports underway, Hannah and Brianna?
So on May 19th, Mrs. Roberts and some student volunteers organized a fundraiser and walk to raise awareness and money for ALS research, and over 300 students participated and almost $3,000 was raised.
And this past Friday, June 2nd, graduation was held at the fieldhouse at Fitchburg High School, so that was kind of the last goodbye to the seniors, and now Class of 2018 gets to sit outside for lunch, weather permitting.
Yeah, it's not working well for you right now.
Patience.
So the FHS baseball and softball teams, they both made it to districts. Unfortunately, they both lost in the first round, but they played a really good season, so we're all really proud of them.
Real progress.
And Angel Figueroa of 2018, he qualified for New England's in the 200-meter dash this past weekend at State.
That's great.
They just fought in the state.
Yeah.
That's great.
And today and tomorrow is freshman science end cass.
Great. Questions from the committee? Let me just say about the graduation. Sometimes, you know, I've been doing this for probably more than almost 20 years. I've attended many graduations, but, you know, you start to get a little complacent about one class to the next, but this was a truly impressive class. And just one little factoid that the superintendent pointed out to me that night, the Gold F recipients? Was it the Gold F? Usually 15, 20, maybe, like 35.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, great. I mean, that's impressive. This is why you want to come to Fitchburg, why you want to raise your families here in Fitchburg. We have an outstanding public school system with all of our challenges, like most cities our size, but we really deliver, and that's a credit to the staff, the superintendent certainly. It says a lot when you've got continuity like we've got as well. He's been our superintendent for 12 years. That's very unusual in communities. I know some of our surrounding communities, four and five, they've gone through over those 12 years, so we're very fortunate, and I just want to say congratulations to everyone involved. You'll be there next year. Maybe your Gold F class will be 40 people. That would be great, wouldn't it? Thank you, folks. Resource Committee Chair, Mr. Stevens.
Okay. Don't have my notes with me, Kerm. I was away all weekend, so I missed graduations for the first time in many years. Gone to a wedding down in West Virginia and glad to be back here. And, but we had, we approved our minutes, our resource committee meeting of May 1st. We have a number of grants and donations that were submitted, which will be on tonight's agenda. Some school choice requests, which are on tonight's agenda. And Mr. Jokel gave us an update on some of the different funding and particularly the MSBA update on, you could speak to that a little bit, Jokel, about what we, for the schools, we're not going to get any funding for the green funding?
Yeah, the MSBA didn't accept the statements of interest on Long's Joe, the roof and windows and boiler, South Street, West's roof, South Street, South Building boiler, and the Goodrich roof. And we're really just now focusing on the Crocker project, and we just shared the timeline of what we need to deliver to MSBA between now and the end of next January.
I don't think we anticipated that anyway. I think this round was really focused on Crocker.
Yeah.
But I do, I, you know, I, you know, my intention next year is, or when the next round becomes available, to focus on Long's Joe.
And that's it on the resource and buildings?
Thank you. Policy Committee, the chair is not here tonight. Ms. Fleming, is there anything to share?
There is nothing to report.
Thank you. Student Support, Ms. Jeanne LaBelle Pierce, Chair.
So nothing new to report. I know the superintendent's going to speak tonight about a parent communication survey that he did, that was something that we talked about in student support, so.
Okay, thank you. School Personnel, we're, I believe we're close to the resolution of the nutrition contract?
They're voting, they're voting June 14th.
Right, that's good.
Yep.
All right, well, we wish and hope for a positive outcome. School Personnel, I really have nothing to report, school personnel. Executive Committee, nothing in that as well. Building Needs, we're all, nothing on that?
We just kind of touched on it just now.
All right. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting, minutes of the regular school committee meeting on May 15th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. No need for executive session, communications. Anyone wishing to participate in that, not seeing any? Is there anyone here for public comment?
We have, we have Councilor Green here tonight observing school committee.
We have two publics here today. I'll say. Mrs. Green's always interested in the schools, so thank you for attending. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Hey, thank you, Mayor.
Just grabbing out.
Just a couple of updates. First of all, our eighth graders are in Washington. If you're interested in following their activities, every, it's being posted on our website, on the Facebook page, Fitchburg Public Schools, and it's been incredible just to watch what they're doing. They are, from a, tonight they're going to a dance, but most of the postings have been about the monuments. They went to Arlington, National Cemetery, today, the changing of the guard, and I guess it was a female guard, and it was memorable for some reason. I don't know if that was the first one or something, but they were talking a lot about that. And then, of course, and you've heard me talk about visiting the monuments, I've had an opportunity to do that twice, and it's such a powerful experience, and to see the pictures and hear their comments and how powerful it is for them too. So they're down there, that's a great, great trip, and I know they're making us proud, and from the comments that I'm seeing, you know, they're really getting a lot out of it, so that's really exciting. I also, I asked Patty to kind of look back over the year. You know how we have donations of money or donations in kind? And I thought, that probably adds up quite a bit. So you have, I think you have the listing in your packets, and if you don't count the Christmas decorations, which there were 80,000 of them at a thousand, at a dollar apiece, we've taken in over $60,000 in donations this year that you've received, and I want to acknowledge that, and I want to say thank you to all of the people out there, and you've seen it's anywhere from computers to clothing to, you know, donations in kind with Mr. Firmani, with all of the landscaping, but I wanted to take this opportunity at the end of the year to thank all of our partners out there who have made these contributions, and how it really adds, you know, to the work that we're doing. And then, one of the topics of the student support group has been communication. How do we best communicate with our parents? And website, email and all, so as you know, I did this short five-question survey, and I just wanted to share the results with you. The first slide is, who participated? We had 82 people participate, and of that, you can see that the bulk of them are the high school. And the first question was, how do you receive information about your child's school? And over 50% is through emails. You've got flyers up there. So emails are 51%, flyers are 11%, newsletters, 1%, Connect Ed, 11%, tweets, 5%, Facebook, three, around three and a half percent, and the school's website, three and a half. The district website, you can see, there was, no one chose that as the primary way for them to access communication. And then teacher website, there was also nothing there for that. Now, I didn't differentiate between website and, you know, their, kind of the portal, the parent portal, so maybe that's something we need to dig a little bit deeper into, you know, what specifically does that look like? And then, how often do you visit your school's website? Put this in a, it's easier to see in a white chart. So rarely, sometimes often, so often is 17%, sometimes is 20%, so about 40% just between often and sometimes, rarely 37%, and never 27%. And that's the school's website, particular website. And then the next one is how often do you visit the district's website? Often 6%, so falls down quite a bit for the district's website, and I think what I've heard anecdotally is that it's, the district's website's more used for transportation, food, you know, cafeteria, policies, no, you know, school handbooks, stuff like that, but as opposed to, now, there's a separate athletics site, so that might get more traffic that's connected to our website. But yet 50% said they never go to the district website. And then this one here is their preferred method of communication. And you see, 53% is email. That was the most popular. And then, the website, again, is just 2%. Facebook, 10%. So email seems to still be, you know, the most popular form of communication. And then I have a whole series of suggestions, and I'll print these out. I had thought, hoped to print these out for you and send them to you, but I'll download them in a document and send that out all to you. But I think that the conversation we were having is this transition from passive communication of going to a website to more active communication of pushing out, which would be emails, Connect Ed, Facebook, Twitter. Jeremy uses Twitter a lot at the high school. Now, there's a lot more to talk about at a high school than there is at an elementary school, let's say, for a principal. But it's a really good way to keep in touch with people. So that's basically where, what I've gotten so far, I think the question is, next steps? You know, do we want to dig a little bit deeper? You know, do, we can bring this information to the next, and I'll, we'll have the, you know, the suggestions, all of the comments. There was a, I don't know how many comments there were, usually says, so there were 30, 30 comments. So that'll be a list of ideas that people might have had in terms of usage or whatever. Any questions on this?
On the district results on this sheet, I'm just curious if, if we have an idea of why there is, I mean, the percentages are really low on parents attending PTO and PTW.
Yeah, that's a separate thing.
Oh, that's not the same?
Yeah, that's a, this was just from the student support of, the question is, what's the best method to communicate with parents?
Okay.
Should it, should we do more on the website? Should we do more on a Facebook? Should be, you know, those kinds of things.
One, sorry to go, sorry. All right, one comment I just have off the top is that we, our goal should really be to catch a large percentage of our families, right? So, and it's at the end of the year, and so people might not click on a survey. I know that Jeremy sent out a survey, because I have a daughter at the high school, that's, you know, and I clicked on it right away. But it might be that a lot of people aren't doing it, or it might be that they're actually not getting it through the contact information that we have. Just because 82 is great, it's a good start, I think our goal should be to see how many we can really get in a district that has so many students. So I, I think one of the things that is interesting there is that we talked a lot about social media, and it's still not as dominant as sort of an older style, you know, email response, and I do think those emails are very effective. So it's, I think of the schools that I've been to, so three schools that my kids have attended in the district, it's really the high school that's been successful at using my email address. I mean, I think people have captured it, but I don't get a lot from that, so it was just something to kind of think about. Do we actually have legitimate email addresses for people?
We do. They're updated now. We depend on the schools.
Right, right.
It's, you know, we don't have a central area where somebody can find out whose email, so, but it's part of the registration process. At each school, they put in an email. When I send out, when I use X2 to send out emails, it's 3,600 emails.
That's why 82 is surprising, yeah.
Individual emails, which would be fewer than our population, because you've got two and three kids maybe in one family. So it goes, and rarely, rarely does an email bounce back to me as a, you know, unreachable or whatever. So I think, I don't know what 80% would be, what percentage that would be of, say, 3,000, but it's not, it's not a high sample, but.
But it's a start, and I, I also, I'm thinking maybe, I think everybody gets those Connect Ed messages, right, from you, so I mean, they all know when not to show up to school.
Very rarely does someone show up.
Right. So I wonder if like a 1, 2, you know, I've just sent out in a parent satisfaction or parent communication survey, and if you didn't get it, talk to your principal or something.
That's, we could do this again and do that. I did not do that.
So it might be something to think.
Send it out and do a Connect Ed that night and follow up and say, I just sent out a short five-question.
Yep.
Yeah, and, but maybe we should tweak it now, that we've got this, and see, okay, what, you know, can we do a little bit deeper?
And I just want to say thank you, because you are very receptive when we bring something like that forward. And it's pretty clear that like the website shouldn't maybe take as much of our conversation as it has in student support. But I still think it's a representation of our district, and there are people who are outside of the district who would be looking at it, but it's good information to get started.
Well, one of the things we're doing with the website right now is, and you've probably seen it, is all the PR that we get, and we have gotten a lot of it in the last month. I'm sending it out to you all the time. It all gets posted. Dina posts everything on the website, and then that gets duplicated, right, on the Facebook page and, and on Twitter. So there's, we've got a system in place that pushes a lot of information out. You know, I sent an email to Charlie St. Armand in the Sentinel, because I thought that the slideshows they put together, the photographs of both of our graduations were beautiful, really beautiful. Well, when we post that automatically, now that's a link that everyone has, and they can go on there and see that. So I think this is kind of a first
Yeah.
attempt at getting some information, and maybe in the fall, let's go back again, retool this survey a little bit, and then I'll follow up with the Connect Ed.
Thank you.
So, speaking of surveys, every year, Title I does a survey out to parents, and I had mentioned to you that I'd have Paula come and talk a little bit about that.
So just a quick update, Eva Kelly is here. She's our parent engagement Title I person, and Eva, excuse me, is responsible for the survey. But just a little sort of background, so in Fitchburg, all of our schools, except Goodrich, are Title I school-wide program schools. That means that Title I funds can be used to support all of the students at the school. Professional development can go, can include all of the teachers at the school. There are formulas for distributing the funds, and it's very highly regulated. But it does allow us to roll out, to implement coherent, comprehensive enrichments interventions across content areas, and now including work in social emotional learning in a way that is district-wide but school-specific. So, you know, if you have questions about the Title I program, I can go into that, but it supports intervention staff, Title I supports the elementary ally coaches, it supports technology, it can't supplant district expenses, but the technology geared towards the assessment program, for example, Title I purchases hardware and software, and then other materials, some professional development funds. One of the requirements for Title I is that in order to write the grant every year, we need data. So every school at this time of year, it's the job of the literacy and math coaches and ally coaches, God bless you, to conduct a site-based program evaluation at their school. Basic questions like, what did you do in Title I? What were the outcomes for students? Pre and post-test data, and we have lots of data. What worked and why do you think it worked? We would continue it. What didn't work and why do you think that happened? And would we try it again, or would we not spend money there? So it's a pretty, and those are available if you'd like to see them in the fall. But one of the requirements, similar data, is a survey of parents. A lot of it is perceptual data, you know how they feel about the school, school climate information from a parent's point of view. And we do this the old-fashioned way, paper and pencil. We get about a 22% or higher return rate. Some of our schools have, Crocker has a 63% return rate. High school, not so much, 1 to 3%. But if you look at those 280, for example, the student population at Crocker is about 449, K to 4. Six to 33% at Rheingold, 40% at McKay, 10% at Long Joe, 19% at Memorial, 19% at South, about 1% at Fitchburg High, and 3% at Goodrich. And you can see, we also have about 25% of the respondees use the Spanish language survey. So when we provide the survey, we provide it in English and Spanish for the parents. The percentage is below that second blue line you have, the word items, or the percent, it's a degree or not agree. It's not a Likert scale, it's just yes or no. And I mean, it's encouraging to see that 94%, in some cases, between 99% and 90% of parents feel they're welcomed at the school. Respect for parents is high. Are teachers available to meet with parents, high. Does your child read every day, 88%. Have you received flyers, Connect Ed messages, or phone calls? Overall, it's a 90% agree, that yes they have. So the messages are getting there. The, do you have internet access? Of the folks who responded, overall, 89% said yes. So that's, that's, I mean, considering we have a 22% sampling, what is statistics, anything over one out of seven is significant? The areas where the scores are a little bit lower, have you attended conferences? Do you volunteer? Have you participated in programs at your child's school? Have you attended workshops on response to instruction or advanced learning? That's, that's something when, you know, Eva kind of plans her events for the year, we really try to capture interests of parents in order to bring them in. Some of the, and you can come on up to the table, Eva, but some of the really kind of hallmark events, I know, Mayor, you were at the Title I Spring Fair, we had 400 families. Eva runs a program at the Library Beginner Bookworms for preschool, parents of preschool and kindergarten. There are some of those programs, when Toto the Tornado Kitten comes, she'll have 90 to 100 families there. So it's uneven. I guess that, you asked that question, Marisa? It's uneven.
Yeah, like the, for parents getting involved in the PTO and, you know, volunteering is, yeah, it's very low.
Yeah. I, you know, frankly, I mean, we talk to parents a lot at these events, and people are working, people are working two jobs, people have daycare issues. A lot of the events we hold in the evenings or on the weekends, parents bring the kids with them, and we provide daycare for the event.
Paul, I just, I'm seeing, do you have internet access?
Yeah.
How does that correlate with, do you use the parent online portal and X2 to communicate with your child's teacher?
Could I?
So they have internet access, but they're not, they don't use it.
Can we ask that, that was connected, asking if they have internet access was connected to the steps to brilliance, because we were trying to understand if they'd be able to access it, and it looks like they will.
Because the majority do, I mean, you know, 89%.
As a, as a sampling, that's pretty strong.
In some schools, it's 94.
Right.
So they're just not, they don't choose to communicate that way, or?
Well, I think a lot of our.
Is it intimidating, maybe, or?
I think a lot of our teachers and parents use email.
Yeah, okay.
They use email.
I do think there's a place for us to be kind of imaginative here about making sure people understand that there is X2, and that they can access X2, and they can see their child's grades on X2, at least as they get older. I don't really know what it looks like for the elementary school kids. Is there really an X2 profile for an elementary school kid?
That's something that the principals are working on with their teachers.
But I, I mean, I think that that would be like an ideal thing, that there's just some like posted webinar on our site that says, this is how you access X2, because we get that pamphlet from you about our code, but you know what? Like, I mean, I tape it on my door, but sometimes it gets blown off by the wind, and I think, where'd that thing go? And it just would be helpful, because your kid can always sign into X2, but I don't think personally I would ever send an email to communicate through that. I would really just use that to kind of check up. I mean, I think we, I would just, I think we should be really proactive about each principal or whatever says, this is how we prefer communication, and if you want to get on X2, this is all it can offer. We've had, last year you had somebody come in and go through it at one of the meetings so that parents could see it, but again, who's, you know, you're not going to catch everybody through this, so somehow I think it's a resource we should have.
I think the challenge is that, and as I said, there have been a few meetings with Adam Render and a group of teachers, and actually all the elementary principals, that the substantive nature of what's posted needs to be formalized, so that there's a reason to go through X2, because otherwise, if I have a question, it's pretty efficient to email the teacher.
Right. I just think it's a resource, a fair amount of parents might not really understand still, and that's not true in a lot of other districts. A lot of other districts, I mean, people are looking at those things every week, every, you know, sometimes every night, so it's, I just feel like that is a piece that really still needs a lot of outreach, and that might even be something as school committee members, we get to some PTO meetings and really help explain it to parents as a resource, so, I mean, I.
The parent conferences too seem to be a little, in certain schools. Is that what you were talking about, Paula? They're all, people are working two jobs, it's, that's the challenge too, to get them physically to go and meet with the, with the teacher. It's always a, you know?
You know, elementary is strong, it kind of fades away, middle school.
Yeah.
High school is a challenge.
High school, yeah. I see that number, 25%. Yeah, okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be a problem, Mayor. But I feel really strongly about this and because I'm in this profession, I do feel like there's a bit of a message that if your child doesn't need to talk because you're doing all right, then it's not something that a parent's going to show up to. And I don't personally believe that that's the role of parent conferences. I really kind of think every student should, every parent and every student should really want to be able to kind of explain how they're doing and I'd love, again, to see some like creative responses to that about ways that maybe students can even update their parents themselves about how they're doing. I know student-led conferences happen in some of the schools, but you do feel like, well, I don't want to bother people because if my child's doing okay, then they don't want to see me.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, how, I don't know if other people feel, I know a few people feel that way because I've talked to them, but that might be why some of the numbers are low. But personally, I don't agree with that philosophy and it, I think there should, again, should be some more discussion about how people get updated about the progress of their child.
And I think too though, that we not only want to let people know how their child is doing, but what their child is doing. And I think that's, that's an important factor as well. But how we get parents to, I guess, have the time and, you know, if they're, if they're working, I don't know what else, what the alternatives are that we can offer, but I think that's something that we could look at.
Could I just ask, that question, have you attended parent conferences? Does that also include, is that like a catchphrase also for like the open houses too? Because, okay, because I think that those are better attended, all right? No? Do you know? I don't know.
I don't know.
All I have is, you know, this hard data. But I mean, I've been to the open houses and they're very, they're attended very well too. I think that what you should be focusing on is, you know, does your child's teacher respond to parent phone calls?
Right.
I noticed that, those are pretty good numbers.
Are your teachers available? And if you look at those numbers, 89 and 90%, like, that's very positive.
Yeah.
So even if they can't make it to the conference because they're working or they can't make it to the open house, when they do communicate with teachers, people are responding, you know? I mean, I don't know what.
There is communication there, it's just not that in-person communication.
And they feel welcome at the schools and they feel, you know. I think this is a good report, don't you?
Well, and the other thing is, if you look at the, are teachers available-
If you do say so yourself, that's right.
Well, if you look at the, are teachers available to meet with parents for scheduled appointments, 90%, it's 90%.
Right.
So, you know, they're meeting, they're just not meeting at that one particular time with PTO.
Are these, are these shared with the principals, this?
Yeah.
Because it's, I think they need to take a look at it when, you know, do you feel welcome at your child's school and one school's 97 and one's 86, you know? I think that principal needs to take a look at why are parents not feeling welcome, you know?
Yeah, it is a sample.
It's pretty good too.
Also-
But the, but the average for the system on that particular question is what, 90? Yeah, 94? Yeah.
There's also a section for comments and I copy all the comments and send copies to the principals and the parent name is on the side of the page that has the comment, so they can always-
So then they can reach back to that person. Good, very good.
Good, thank you.
The one, the one nice question we added, and it was partly because of Footsteps to Brilliance, but also anticipating the change with the ESSA, the federal act, where there could be more, higher expectations for engagement with preschool, is do you have a child under the age of five living with you? And 32%, I mean, it's pretty strong consistently across the schools, that third of the families who responded have little ones. So that says that, because with, it's some, when we had Burbank Hospital locally, you could get birth records easily, but now when children are born all over, it's harder to try and compile that. But knowing that there's still a strong young early childhood group coming up through the system, then we, that's what we're looking for, for example, the Footsteps to Brilliance or early childhood work. So that was a handy, for us, a handy piece of information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. So a quick, this is our second hearing on the budget and you had the slides from last week or two weeks ago. There was very little feedback on the budget. The only place that we have revisited on the budget was the reduction of hours in the summer of our schools. Based on your feedback, we have chosen not to reduce the summer hours of the administrative assistance staff. And Bob will tell you where we went because that was $29,000, so we had to go find $29,000. So Bob will fill you in on that and any other changes that there may be as we finalize the budget.
So thanks. So on Tuesday, when we met with the resource subcommittee meeting and again, as we kind of fine-tune the budget based on new information which arrives, arrives every day, we think we can save that $30,000 roughly from savings in healthcare next year associated with grants paying for the healthcare versus the city. So there's going to be some more people eligible, so we'll be saving there. And then any additional healthcare savings will be offset against sped increases and that'll be about $40,000. So in total, our projected grant reimbursement of healthcare could be about $70,000 higher than what we originally projected. Okay. So two things I wanted, I passed out to all committee members tonight. The resource subcommittee meeting, we went over the line item budget, the first pass of it. I emailed each of you an updated version. There were some staff that were not in the correct school, so that's been adjusted. And I also attached the listing of staff, not names, but positions in the city budget and the grant budget that'll be impacted. So I realize I emailed that to you earlier. If you want to go over it now, we could, or if you want to look at it and get back to me anytime over the next week or so, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then separately, one of the other topics that we discussed at the resource subcommittee meeting was the transferring to grants and the food service revolving accounts of health insurance associated with employees either funded by those grants or the food service revolving account. And as I mentioned to the resource subcommittee, this is a structural change, this is the first year of grants and the food service revolving account picking up health insurance. This year, it'll be about 632,000. So the grants will be cutting the city a check for that this year. Actually, there will be, I'll call it a short-term impact to net school spending because the grants are paying for the health insurance instead of the city on those people. So in conversations with the, the new city auditor, once the free cash is certified in September, there'll be a reimbursement. So it's really a timing issue more than anything else and we're in agreement of, you know, how that funding will work. So-
Bob, what do you, what do you mean by non-renewal? What is that? Non-renewal, that, actually.
Yeah, there are staff who, within the first three years, before they become professional status, they're, it's kind of-
You know, rehired, okay.
Yeah, they're not hired.
All right. Is there a number of those, right?
No question asked. Yeah, there are several.
Okay.
And again, behind that, Mayor and the rest of the school committee, is the, you know, typically call it the Munis budget, but really I'll call it the line item budget because Munis is just the software program. And again, we showed the budget from 16 compared to 17 and 18 and the difference between 17
So if you, you know, if you look, keep looking at it tonight and, you know, anything comes up, either email myself or Bob. So just some updates, Boys and Girls State. As you know, Mr. Vaughn doesn't slow down when it comes to sending kids off to Boys and Girls State. You have a list of the students in your packet. We're going to be sending 28 students to Boys and Girls State, which is, we oftentimes are the highest district in the state sending our students. So that's pretty exciting. And this Thursday, if any of you are available at Fitchburg High, is the send-off. So if you're available at 1 o'clock on Thursday afternoon at Fitchburg High, and I think, Mayor, I think you're coming, we're gonna, it's the send-off, the official send-off to the students as they head off to Boys and Girls State. Great program.
Can I just, I just quickly ask, Paula, maybe at the next school committee meeting, will we accept the donations of these?
Oh yeah, okay. So would you make sure to put it on the-
Yeah, agenda, yeah.
So we'll add these donations, so it's even more than 60,000 in funding. So then there are a number of donations tonight. One is a $350 donation to Girls on the Run and that'll cover different programs here at Memorial. Then there's another donation at South Street for the same thing. There are picnic tables. If you got to come to the opening of the new garden area at South Street Elementary School, there was $150 worth of picnic tables that were donated. It's a, if you get a chance to, come and see it. So if you, you look at the central office building to the right, there's a courtyard there. It's in there and it's just really beautiful.
How many were donated?
What's that?
How many were donated?
Three altogether, yeah.
A total of 150?
Yeah, then the next one, the next donation is 300. There's two, one picnic table in the first one and two in the second one because they're from different donors. And then Mr. Fermani, $150 in loom, which was, or loom, depending on where you were born. We always called it loom.
Loom.
But it, you know, but I guess in Ohio, you'd be driven out if you called it loom. But anyway, it's the soil.
Dirt.
Dirt.
Yeah, dirt, dirt, okay.
That's how they say it in Illinois.
It's the soil that's in the beds and that was from Mr. Fermani.
Good dirt.
And then there's a submittal of grants. We're submitting a 21st century grant, a McKinney Vento grant, a professional development frameworks grant and the ELT grant up to 1,300 per pupil. And then there's an approval to submit and accept the grants, which is the Jane Goodall Roots and Shoots Mini Grant. There is, so that's all of the grants and the accepted gifts. Next line item is in school choice. I contacted Jeremy and said that I would like to provide Chromebooks for another class. As you know, we provided them for most of the freshman class last year, you provided them for the seniors. And I thought, let's keep this going. This is school choice money, just to be clear, it's not city money, it's school choice money. So I brought that to the resource subcommittee and they said, well, what would it cost to do the whole high school? So what you have here is the proposal to use school choice funds to provide one-to-one Chromebooks for every student at Fitchburg High. And that would be for September, this coming September. And that is a total of $170,000.
Okay.
And with that, that would mean that every student at Fitchburg High, not only is on Chromebook, but would have access to the Google platform. There's a lot of collaborative work now that's being done by students who have Chromebooks. So there, there are just a lot of benefits to that. And then the other suggestion of the resource subcommittee is that we look at creating a replenishing account, amount in school choice so that we don't have to revisit it every year, but we get a sense from the tech department is, how much, how many Chromebooks should we then be purchasing every year in order to keep it up to date? The high school keeps some extra because Chromebooks break or something goes wrong, there's always a replacement available. So the student, you know, doesn't go without it. But I'm, I'm, I'm going to put together a press release on this because this is not just an aside. This is a very substantial investment, both in technology and in student learning. Because I have seen what can be done with a couple of classrooms on Google, the Google platform, where they're communicating, where teachers can give assignments, they can make corrections, right, you know, online, so all of that. So I want to thank the school committee for not only thinking that, you know, some investment is a good idea, but saying, let's go the whole nine yards.
So this officially makes all Fitchburg High one-to-one?
One-to-one.
That's incredible. The other thing that's really great about, I don't, I'm curious if this is part of how you purchase it, the cases that they come in are vital. I mean, that's-
Have all of that.
That's great because that makes the difference.
Every student gets a case and-
Durable case, nice case.
Durable, really great.
Very smart.
I mean, I've seen them. It's, it's really excellent.
Yep.
And, you know, really, we've really not had problems with them much at all, you know?
I talked to Jeremy, I think he said they lost one with the senior class and they paid for it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, when you think of how many are out there, you know, people, this is a pretty, they're pretty proud of this, you know, possession and it gets used. The issue that they're looking at now, which I think Eileen said is going to be fine, was, okay, if, if everybody now is online at the high school, does our bandwidth and everything, will we be able to handle it all? And it appears that yes, it will. So we're doing this early enough, the goal is, my goal is to have these handed out to every student as they arrive in September at the high school, which would be great. And then just last week, this, one of the topics at the student support subcommittee has been, let's take a look at the music program. We've had Tabitha Greenleaves come and I think some of the other music teachers came. We got an assessment of, you know, what do we need to do to create even a better feeder system for the middle school band, for the high school band. But you also have to look and see, who are your music teachers and which ones have the capability to actually teach instrumental music because not everyone is able to do all of that. So from those conversations, an interest grew from the music teacher at South Street Elementary School and the high, and so there are two components to this and that's what I didn't talk about when we were talking about it earlier, is one, the teacher having the ability, the teacher then wanting to do it, and then being able to put it into the schedule. And so Mr. Thompson worked with the music teacher and was able to create a schedule to have a fourth grade instrumental music program. So in order to do that, I'm asking for almost $8,000 in school choice funds for instruments.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping next year, maybe we can do it with the four elementary schools. When you're talking roughly $8,000 and we're able to do the Chromebooks for the high school, which we're not going to have to do next year, we might probably be able to then do it for, for grades.
Yeah, so what we're, what we need to be doing is, there's two things going on here, it's not just the instruments, it's making sure we have the right people in the place who actually can do the instrumental teaching. Because we've done, as you know, you do music appreciation, it's, you know, learning music. That's different than, and what we learned with Tabitha is that basically if, if the music teacher can teach, can play a few instruments or they can probably learn, at least at an elementary level, to teach all of them. Tabitha, as you saw at the graduations, she is a treasure. She, I don't know when she ever goes home. Like Jeremy said, she's the last one to leave that building on a lot of nights. leave that building on a lot of nights, and in all the time she's been here, I have never heard her say no to either a civic responsibility or a school responsibility in any way, so.
And they sounded great, graduation, they sounded great.
They sounded incredible. So really good stuff, and that's basically, there's a line item transfer, did you already talk about that? Okay, so that was that, I think, I think that's it.
And there's a live warrant tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
So any questions about-
Out of practice for these things, yeah.
Any questions about the Chromebooks or the music program?
I'm just glad we're continuing to grow the music program. You know, as Paula will remember, we had a music teacher in each building, and then we had a couple of, two music, instrumental music teachers who traveled between the buildings and taught students during the day, had classes after school, but they, we also used the pull-out method, where kids got lessons in school, and, yeah.
I do remember that.
Yeah.
And just, you reminded me of something, so, and Jean, you'd appreciate this, so we're sending out the requests for proposals for the gala after-school program before school gets out.
Good, great.
So that if people are interested, they can put in for their proposals and then have the summer to work on their, their program. So that'll give us a real heads-up, you know, an advantage in September when everybody comes back.
There are just so many good things going on.
Yeah.
There are.
Fitchburg is a good school system.
Really is a good school system.
And we're not having a controversy, we're lucky, we have the mayor here, he gives us a good, you know, we know what we're dealing with.
Thanks, Peter.
We know what we're dealing with, and he, so Superintendent and his cabinet, they worked on what we have, and we have a budget, and we're ready to go, and we're in good shape.
You want to bundle these, ladies and gentlemen?
Sounds good.
So action items, 17-856 up through and including 17-867. Motion?
Make a motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, unanimous. No need for executive session, I have a motion for adjournment.
Motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.